This time I'd like to reiterate the meeting from November the 2nd. And the purpose of recommiting is to discuss the water and sewer user rate study. So at this time, we will turn to Ms. Shible.
First, I'd like to call your attention to the 30th Annual Virginia Water and Wastewater Rate Report. I've laid one of those in front of you this evening. I just want to walk through there real quick with you, just to kind of show you a few things. If you turn to page three in the report, I've highlighted things either in yellow or put them in a red box, basically relating to what county information is, just so you can see it. Drake Brayden's been doing this study for 30 years, and in their control group, for the past 20 years, they have a select number of utilities, 20 of them that they've been using through this control group. And really what it shows, if you look at the last 10 years, the cost of inflation or the cost to do business is 3.8% for water and 4.7% with sewer, and that's per year, just to keep up with that inflation. So that's about 4.25% cost to operate or inflation each year, just to keep up with that inflation. If you look below, you can kind of see the numbers that the county has and where we're at. So 2008, we were at 5%, 81.5, and so on and so forth. So as you can see, we had a huge increase in 2009. That's when the board said, "We want to make sure utilities is self-sufficient and able to stand on its own two feet." And we actually decreased water rates just a little bit, and we increased wastewater rates. But it essentially came out to an 81% increase. And then, at that time, Mr. Rogers came in, kind of walked through the board of where we were at, what we needed to do with utility, and we had decided at that point, we were going to raise rates for the next three years at 5%, which we did. And then, the idea was is to continue to look at raising those rates, to make sure that we continued to have a positive cash flow. 2013, rates were not raised. 2014, we raised water but not wastewater. So the average bill was 1.3%. And then, the last four years, we haven't raised the rates at all. So if you flip to the next page, it shows, on the bottom left there, it shows 3,000 gallons, 4,000 gallons, and 5,000, and each of those three columns there at the bottom, shows you what the monthly residential rate is. Inside means they're in their service territory. Outside would be, we don't have outside, but for instance, Town of Bowling Green, if you're not into town, but you'd have utilities, that would be an outside rate, just so you understand what those are. And I'm just trying to walk you through, so you can kind of see what those are. The next page, Water Rate Summary by System Size. So this is great information. We use this each time. I'm before the board. I grab this book, and I go back and look at what's the latest and greatest information. This is literally a week and a half old. They just sent these out. So it really goes through and can tell you the different sizes, less than 5,000 connections, 5 to 50,000, 50,000 plus, and then all of them together. And I just think it's real good information when we're trying to look at where we are as utility compared to others. Of course, each utility system is an individual, and it operates in different ways, so there's different parameters that you need to look at, such as us, you know, we've got the Commonwealth Church Interchange, and then we go all the way to Ladysmith. So there's a big, there's a lot of infrastructure between Commonwealth Church and Ladysmith that costs a lot more money than somebody that might have it just in one area. So our, we have differences that others don't. And the last thing I'll call your attention to is on page six. It just talks about connection fees and capital recovery, which right now, we call availability fees. Eventually, I'd like to change that to be capital recovery. It just shows you what the averages are, and then, again, we're below that in the red, just to give you an idea of where we're at. And then, it gives you all the data from each of the individuals for water and wastewater through the other pages. Just really good information. I thought it was important for the board to have that, to be able to review and look at those different things. Maybe as we get into further discussions, that might come in handy.
Joey, before you leave that?
Yes, sir.
You've got connection and capital recovery charges. You said we're below. Is that $1,000 below, and $1,000, that's our total cost below for each connection?
The $1,000 is what we actually charge for connection fee, or cost plus 20%, depending on what the value is. So if we take Ladysmith Village, for instance, they're building a home today. The contractor does all the work. We charge them $1,000 today, and we go out and inspect the line and make sure everything's good. If you were to build a house on Route 1, and you asked us to perform the work, we would go out and do all the work. We would add up all of our time, and we'd add 20% to it. So minimum would be $1,000, or cost plus 20% is what ours is.
So these other figures, the average 20 to 100 would be what we would charge the customer?
That's the average of what everyone else is charging for those fees. Some of the localities are starting to get to a point where, just like us, my example is Ladysmith Village, we're charging $1,000, but we don't do anything. So to do, charge a fee for that, a lot of localities are starting to get away from that and just charging a capital recovery fee. And then, if you did have that individual, it would be cost plus 20%. But that way, you're not actually charging for something you're not actually doing anything for.
Ms. Shible?
Yes, ma'am.
Explain capital recovery fees.
Capital recovery fee, we refer to it here as an availability fee. And basically, what that does is pays for your availability in our water and wastewater system. So that is supposed to go, that money is supposed to go straight to paying debt, and is to recoup money that we have, such as our wastewater treatment plant, $18 million you're buying. As you connect a house, you're paying for your 400 gallons or 300 gallons of wastewater there, and you're paying for 400 gallons of capacity in the water system. So it's just what you paid for, for your availability in our system. And I can't make their combined charges. I've called twice and left messages asking them to explain their combined charges. I can't make heads or tails of where that number came from, so I'm waiting for them to, I assume since they have not called me back, that they're trying to figure it out as well.
Who's they?
Because if you, Drake Brayden, Cheryl's the one who actually, with Drake Brayden, Cheryl's the one who actually did this. She's working with us on our intake. Cheryl Stephens.
Nobody else, they don't have half-inch connections?
Not really. Most of them's either 5 eighths or 3 quarters.
Because they only ask for 5 eighths, 3 quarters.
Right, and that's pretty much the standard. Yeah, that's the standard residential or, you know, commercial connection, that's what that is. So you wouldn't, most don't have even a half-inch, just a standard half-inch isn't even used anymore. Any other questions on that?
If I had to guess, the combined charges might be, they don't have a second rate for water and wastewater. But I don't have, because they have a second rate.
Yeah. And next, just for information purposes, for the board, I've laid a separate page on your desk, which is basically to review the rates since 2000, so you'll have a good idea of where we've been over the past 18 years. This is laid out to answer Mr. Thomas's question from a previous meeting. I've met with Mr. Bassoon, and his staff put together the numbers. I had to give him the list of customers, of commercial customers, that are connected to the county's utility system. He took every one of those customers and came up with each of the individual's combined or real estate, B-Pole, meals tax, TOT, property and sales tax, and gave me what they actually have for 2018 collected for that. So as you can see, as you go through there, and what this just is showing is that with those businesses, we've collected just over $5 million. That $5 million equates to 19 and 1/2 cents on the tax rate. Right now, every penny is $260,000. So in order to equate to $5 million, it would be 19 and 1/2 cents. And really, an analogy that I've used in here is to show you that an average household with land in Caroline County is $189,000. So for instance, myself, I live over in the Childsburg area, far west. I don't have water or sewer, but yet I pay taxes in the county. So what is that utility system worth to me? Well, if I owned a house for $189,000, I would have paid $1,573 in taxes. If I did not have a utility system in the county and had businesses connected to it, in order to bring in the county to bring in the same revenue, you would have to raise my taxes and everyone else's 19 and 1/2 cents. So basically, the tax rate would go to $1, $1, $2.50, and I would have paid $1,947 to bring in that same amount of revenue that the county normally sees. So the value was, is I would see a savings of $373, is what I actually see because they have businesses. If we did not, I'd be paying, everybody would be paying that additional amount. So is that a good way to look at it? Not necessarily, but I think it gives you an idea that the business investment brings in taxes, and there's actually a savings.
Well, what prompted the question was, we're spending $2.4 million in utility that are the general fund.
So if we flip it to the next page, flip it over on the back, general fund versus business investment taxes. $5 million is what we got in revenue. 1.92018 is what we transferred from the general fund, so we've got a net positive of $3 million. And I think it's important just to note that the link between economic growth and public utilities are absolutely essential and play a vital role in the continued economic expansion of the county. Kind of came up with a slogan that kind of goes with that, "Where the water flows, Caroline County grows." I talked with Mr. Wilson, and he said without utilities, he wouldn't be able to get a lot of the stuff that he's been able to work towards. Right now, the problem we've got is having a million gallons of water. We get a lot of people to come say, "Do you have a million gallons of water?" And our answer is, "No, we don't." You know, we're working towards it, but we get a lot that want a million gallons of water. So while we've invested money, you know, the boards, I think, have been really wise in investing in utilities because it brings businesses in. We expanded our wastewater treatment plant into absolute worst time. The economy was down. We didn't have to expand it for current customers. But on the other side, we built it the cheapest you were going to build it, because people were just trying to keep their employees, and the interest rate on the loan was really low. And today, three times this year, we've exceeded 500,000 gallons, and we would be on a building moratorium, and you wouldn't be able to have any connections to the utility system at all until you expanded the plant.
Now, you missed a point there. With 2008, when we did it, before we did it, all of the, I guess, proposals or estimates we got were in the $34, $340 million range.
Correct, about $36 million.
$36 million. And because of the environment, and because we went through a public-private partnership, it went down to $18 million.
Correct.
So we, we didn't, you know, we can't say we saved. It's like when you buy something on sale, you're not really saving it. But we didn't spend $18 million more than we could have if we'd have done it the year before.
Correct.
So that's, that's the point. We got a much bigger return on investment.
That's true.
Now, the other point is, if we hadn't done that in 2008, we would be under a moratorium now for business development, which means we would have never won the Harris Teeter deal, we probably wouldn't have got McKesson, we probably, well, we wouldn't have been even in the running for Walmart when we had that before it didn't come. So all these businesses that we just recently got are a result of that decision 10 years ago.
Correct, yes, sir.
And the other question is, Mr. Sealy just said we had $2.4 million, is that what you said, transferred?
Yep.
Transferred from general fund to pay for debt. So you've got 1.9 as a transfer to debt.
And the budget was higher, and this is what actual transfer?
This is the actual transfer.
Yeah.
So if we didn't do anything with the utility system as it was, they would have a net positive of $3 million, just the utility system. If you take all that out, what we said before, and what's been true for the last few years, is the utility system or water is paying for itself, but we're paying for the debt on the wastewater treatment plant, which is really the issue.
Correct.
Well, we're also going to pay for the debt on any, we have upgrades that are going to have to be done. We've talked about lines that have to be replaced.
Yeah, but that's a whole other...
But the point is, is that we didn't, we have to make, we're not done with investment, and the maintenance on this has got to come out of the general fund still, which is going to be millions more.
Yeah, but, well, that's a fair point. My point was, the debt we have right, or the issue with transferring from general fund right now is the fact that it's basically the wastewater treatment plant, which is our engine for economic growth. Your point is valid and well-taken, is we have to take care of the infrastructure we have now. So we have to somehow address that. But there are two different components to this whole thing, and they're two separate components.
I don't know that they're separate, because it's still going to be money out of the jar. Anything we do to the utility system. And we have, we have the discussion every year about raising rates and actually putting money into capital, and we always, we don't do it. Since I've been to the board, we have never set money aside for capital. And we're margin tank maintenance, how, what's one tank, $500,000 for maintenance?
About $120, $125.
Because we spent half a million dollars...
We did, but we actually budget now money every year that comes out of part of that operating expense, and it goes into a special fund that we set aside.
You're just telling me that your cost to do business goes up 4.5% every year, but we haven't, we haven't raised the rate enough to keep up with that, so you know...
Correct. And if you look at what Mr. Courtney has to present, you'll watch the numbers, they actually start going down, and we're getting close where we won't be self-sufficient anymore from an operational standpoint.
Chairman, if you let them finish their presentation, then we can get into some discussion.
All right. Well, I was just going to finish answering questions, and I was going to turn it over to Mr. Rogers to let him walk through. Previously, Mr. Rogers presented to the board a 3% and 9% option, and then we've got a 5% option. He's going to walk through tonight and just hit some of the high points on that with you all, and I'll turn that over to him. For reference, I gave you the copies from the last, from the last meeting, just so you would have those.
So you had the book from last time, yeah. And I was, thank you, Joey. I was going to add, so glad you said that before, just for reference, the 3% case had no additional dollars going for ongoing capital, for some of the maintenance type of things you're doing, trucks, things like that. The higher case, you might recall, was, so we'd have some dollars going into, one, the fund balance, and two, would also be going over into, cutting into, into some of that capital. So by the end of, and I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the presentation from a month ago, by the fifth year, we had $360,000 available for capital. I'm on page 44 of that presentation from October 9. That's the, it looks like this, the page that has the pro forma. And it basically, because that same amount is going into, going into fund balance. So we're actually putting a little bit of money away for a rainy day, a true rainy day, but it also allows us to have some capital outlay and not have to worry about extra dollars coming up the end of the day that may not show up one year. What I heard that night, that was a 9%, 11% case. And so I think the feedback we got was maybe a little sticker shock, and so we were asked to go back and look at a different scenario, and that's what...
Right, right.
Yeah. I can, I can read from here. What we did was, and this is the book, the thinner book for tonight, so it's November 7th on it. What we did is, we went back and did a third case, if you would. This is just, basically, all we did was change, instead of going as high as 9% and 11%, we tried to keep transfer, which, I know we just talked about 1.9 million, that was in 2018. The budget for 19 is 2.2, so we stayed with the budget level of 2.2 million, that's the general fund.
That was the budget number, not the actual transfer number.
Right. The actual for 18 was 1.9, but the budget for 19 is 2.2. And so we stuck with the budget for 19. We used budget and built off the 19 budget. So we stayed with the 2.2, flatlined it for 2019 and beyond. Basically, we still have the borrowing that we talked about last time. I think it was 1.2 million for number eight.
Yeah.
I don't think we've, I don't think, the question is, did they agree on borrowing for the 1.2? I'm not sure we got the green light to go forward, but we've concluded in here for the pro forma, 1.2 million.
It's in the budget. It's in the budget. We just need to get to that.
So it has been put in the budget. So we assumed that 1.2 million, I think, was our number there. So that's the same as we did in previous cases. But what we changed is the third item, which is, we went 5% across the board for service charges, the administrative fee, and the capital asset fee, rather than going up to 9% and We took any revenues at the end of the day that were left over, and we split it 50/50 between going into the reserve fund, the capital, and then the other half going into, I mean, reserve funds, building up cash, and the other half going into capital or pay go fund, if you would. So that, and that helps us out in terms of our coverage, obviously helps a lot. And the other thing we did keep constant was the availability connection fee at the 2019 budget level of 5%. So the numbers are on the next page, and so we don't have as much, and I'm looking out at 2024, 2024, the number up here that actually goes to capital, $182,000. And so that same amount would fall into the cash, would build up the cash as well. I'll show you what those charts look like in just a moment, but you'll see it builds up. In 2020, we don't have any, but in 2021, we have $30,146. So we start adding a little bit in terms of capital, and that same amount's dropping into the reserve fund as well.
Courtney, let me ask a question.
Sure.
On these percentages, like the capital asset fee, is this a percent of the bill?
It's a percent of the charge, or you can look at it as the bill.
So if a customer charged 5% of the 80, then they would get $4 on the charge for the capitalized one?
Right. So you look at it either way, either, if they're, if they're been averaging $100 a month, it's going to go up five bucks.
Now, Courtney, what's the total system?
1,600 on water and 980 on...
So, yeah.
So would the capital asset fee, excuse me, would capital asset fee be on both water and sewer?
Yeah, today, it's, right now, it's $1.05 for water and $2.10 for sewer. So, and that's based on, we added that fee to try to put a fee out there for the board to be able to give them that flexibility to be able to add to that in the future. And we just set the rate, we started off at $1 on water and $2 on wastewater. It does depend on what size connection that is. So that's strictly for 5 eighths, 3 quarters. If you're commercial, at the same size meter, it actually doubles. So they're paying two, and then they were paying four. We had a 5% increase, so that's where the $1.05 came from and the $2.10 came from, because we did do an increase, and we did, that was included on those fees. So when it goes up, that fee, last time, it actually, it is associated as a flat fee that the board has set. So in the future, if you wanted it to be off of the total bill, we would have to change just the way that's laid out in the code, but we could do that.
So, Mr. Shible? Is, do most localities do a flat fee, or do they do, because I'm going by our experiences with our favorite private company, the mountain.
Yeah, you can't use that.
Are they, are they, we'll talk about them here in a minute. Are they, like, they're going with, I thought they were going to be trying to do a flat fee on the, the capital cost, let's say, I mean, that wasn't staying accounting, that was our big problem. And you're doing a flat fee now. Do most localities?
Now, the flat fee was actually based on a percentage of whatever their capital expense was that they put in.
Right.
And then there was a cap on that. So it was a percentage based on what they put in, cash they put into the system.
You're asking about what most localities do in terms of a capital asset fee or something like that?
It's generally a flat.
It's generally a flat fee. I mean, in Spotsylvania, it had the same thing. They had a debt service, they called it debt service fee at one time, and they've changed it. Trying, because, and one of the issues that a lot of people got away from just straight by metric charges is because with people using less water, it's hurt the whole system, so people have gone to a fixed fee, trying to make up for that.
Right. People conserve.
So is there something, do you have a uniformed utility tax?
I'm not aware of a uniformed utility tax. On water and sewer. There may be a utility tax on, like, on, like, phones and things like that, cable bills.
My reason for asking is, based on the information that Joey gave us regarding the revenue that's generated, and all of the county residents benefit from the revenue that's generated from the businesses, particularly those that are using the most, but yet we're sitting here talking about our residents of the county who are on the system, and they are the only ones that we're looking at as having any skin in the game. But in actuality, every household in this community, every landowner has skin in the game, because it's keeping our taxes at a rate where we can not drive away potential folks who come into Carolina.
You can't, people have their own water and sewer. They've got wells and stuff, and they've got to keep that up. You can't charge them water and sewer for a public system.
But the point is...
Wait, 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 hear me out there. So those folks are benefiting though. Okay, wait a minute, hear me out there. Don't try to... Those folks are benefiting from the taxes that are generated from these businesses, correct? Would you agree to that?
No, because, you know, no, because the majority of users are households.
Right.
Households are the biggest users, because most businesses, the wastewater is very, very low, right, Joey? They don't handle a lot of wastewater. It's some of the bigger businesses.
You have a bigger...
I mean, it's for commercial versus residential?
I don't have that.
It's 40%?
Yeah.
Because I would say that greater than 50% of the usage comes in, it's from your commercial...
For wastewater or for water?
Both.
Because you can't, you can't measure wastewater.
No, you can't. You better written gallons going out. But a warehouse has got two or three bathrooms.
Yeah, but when I'm thinking of, when you're asking about commercial, and I think about our big users, when you're talking about...
Well, too.
Flying J, moving and truck wash, the beat-out rest area, those, all those truck stops, they are big users. The hotels are big users.
Right. Now, and that's one point. Let me say this one thing, and then I'll go back to ratings, but nobody understands or has said that the genesis of this system was not a residential system. Now, it predates me, just so you know. But it was originally intended to just serve commercial businesses in the Commonwealth Church.
Church, right.
That's what it was.
And that's what got us Petro.
And then we started getting other things to expand. But I needed the rest of the board to understand, that was its original genesis, but then it started expanding. And I have some comments when you get finished on this one.
Mr. Ewell, I'm sorry, go back.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, just a general feeling from the board regarding, we're willing to accept the revenue that's generated that supports all of the county in terms of everything that we do to operate the county. But we're saying, from least my view, in terms of, we're saying that a few people can then be the generator of additional revenue or capital needed for our utilities when we're all yet benefiting from that. I don't have, I'm not on the county system myself, but I think I'm benefiting from businesses.
Well, I would agree. I mean, we all benefit from the proceeds that are the profit we make from our businesses, which is why it started as a commercial business. However, everybody in the county pays on a debt fee, because everybody in the county pays taxes, so everybody has skin in the game.
Right. I hear that. But they're also getting the $400.
But we're also now offering, offering services out to residential, so there's a lot of different...
Yeah.
Okay, I'm, I want to ask Courtney, who just got from Joey, is half and half commercial versus residential now? So I think it goes up to Ladysmith, that's probably Mr. Ryan's or someone's business, but not the government. You haven't factored any of this into your numbers, business or commercial versus residential?
We've treated everybody equal in terms of increase.
And you also haven't factored into any of these numbers what I've said in the beginning, and what I think this is a, a two-part process, and one part is the water system and maintaining that, and the best thing in the, you know, maintenance we're going to have to do versus the wastewater treatment plant, which is really the engine that drives everybody. Because without the wastewater treatment plant, we don't get any new business. And that's where everybody in the county benefits from new business. I've got a well. I've actually had to dig a new well. County didn't help. I did that, but I'm still getting $400 a month less, or a year, less in taxes that I have to pay because of the investment the county made.
in taxes that I have to pay because of the investment the county made. So we're all involved in the investment for the wastewater treatment plant, but we're not all involved in the water usage that they have or the maintenance of those lines. That's why I say it's, it's really two parts that we need to look at, and then we also need to look at the, you know, commercial residential part. So there's, and if you haven't put those in your numbers, we're in trouble. Because your, your, your numbers are gonna say exactly the point I said last time. You're gonna say a 4%, 5% increase on the water users makes the whole system old, but none of that includes the wastewater treatment plant. So if that's the case, I, I wanna go back in time, not increase the wastewater treatment plant, the numbers would be old, we wouldn't be worried about it, but they wouldn't have any, well, a few of us wouldn't have any business in our area, because we wouldn't have the, you know, our capacity. So we all share in that wastewater capacity, but none of these numbers will show the way we share. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I see Mr. Williams' question, Mr. Williams.
We, it used to be you could build a school, put a cesspool out front or back. Can't do that anymore. So without this system, bringing this park would not, would not exist.
Another thing that doesn't-
Madison, Madison.
Wouldn't be expanded.
The cesspool that used to be there.
Right.
Is, that's been, that's now illegal. So it had to be, you know, you know, there's, there's a lot of things that, I don't know how, I don't know how we would pull it out. I get, I get your point, I just don't know how to pull it out, because it's, it's become so, like a library, you know, and Lady Smith has it, this building has it.
But do all of your people that, or the kids in your district that go to Madison or Melissa Clark, do they all have access to the water system?
At their home? No.
Yeah.
At their schools, yes.
So they have, they are benefiting from that expansion, and they're not even gonna be impacted by any rate decrease. Right? Because they're going to the school where the water system helped them to expand.
Schools will be paying more to us for it.
That's our money, we don't even need to, you know, that's our money. It's, it's all the same money. But the reality is, they're gonna benefit by going to the schools, we all benefit by expanding the schools. The high school's the same way. You know, it's sitting there, not on our system. Well, kind of our system, but it's there, it's the same money, it's gonna be dotted in the middle for eventually. That's the same thing. You don't get the benefit at home, but you get the benefit somewhere else. You're the only one with kids in the school, so.
Let's get back to the report, so we can have more questions to ask.
That's what I'm saying, nothing.
No, you're not, you're not, you're benefiting, though.
We were just looking, just for informational purposes here, and in fact, the details are back on, on tab A, page seven. Whole other new one. Looking at operational expenditures, there's a line item called utilities administration, which is both water and wastewater. Then you've got water supply and treatment, for budget 18, it's basically about, around about $700,000. Wastewater treatment is right at a million, and then you've got utilities right below that, it's $350,000. So you got basically about-
The middle operating expenditure.
Page seven?
You're on the right page, kinda go down to the-
About halfway down, halfway down.
Operational expenditures, right there, yes. Administration, water supply and treatment.
I was just trying to give you a sense of how much is water, how much is wastewater. Water supply and treatment is $700,000. Wastewater treatment and utilities collection, you'd have those together, that's your wastewater. State Fair stands on it, on, you know, that's kind of a standalone, and so is the pool park, so don't have those. And then utilities administration is basically a little of both.
So what does that sound?
Your water's about $700,000, your wastewater is about a million and three.
In terms of operating.
So wastewater's about twice as expensive in terms of just the-
And that's kind of the way it charges you, right?
And revenues come in, about $900,000 is residential water and sewer, and 1.6 million is commercial water and sewer. And then, one thing to think of is, we don't bill our commercial customers the same as we do residential. While they still have a base fee and they still have a tier, they're charged more based on their meter size and their, their, their amount of water that they get in each of those tiers changes. So if you get a bigger capacity fee, you would spread out how much you would get, the lowest tier, for residents 1 to 4, 0 to 4,000 is tier one. If you were to jump up to a two-inch meter, for instance, so residential customer gets a flat fee for water for $7.02, and then if they were to use between 0 and 4,000 gallons, we charge $1.52 per thousand. So if I take a commercial customer with a two-inch meter, it goes to $121 compared to the $17.
And what pays that on? First rate?
That's actually in our rates, it's not, yeah, it's in our rates.
As your rate. Essentially, it's, if your pipe size is this big, you pay one rate. If it's twice that size, you're paying twice the rate.
Right. But that's, that's for commercial.
Commercial. And just showing that we do charge a difference to bring in additional revenue.
You had an extra large household.
Their, their administrative fees, you get a dollar five for water for residential for that same one for commercial, they pay $6.30 for that capital asset or debt service fee.
So they're paying more because their pipe size, it's, it's based on the amount of capacity they're buying.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna assume that's fair.
It is, and that's-
The reality is, we could double our commercial rates and say, yeah, you guys have, now I have to pay more, and that'll take care of whatever the rate increase was on residential. But we would, we would risk a business saying, that's too much for us to pay, go and move.
Right.
So some areas we have to kind of accommodate for them.
You might remember, we did this five years ago, six years ago, and we really got into the system and looked at all the tiers and everything.
When we redid the whole thing.
When we redid the whole thing, we went to the American Water and Wastewater Association standards as far as pipe size and how they allocate.
It is 2009.
Which are all-
Which is actually-
Those are all public systems, though.
Yeah, it's a, this is a national organization.
But they were all public systems and not private systems like Mr. Black.
Right, oh, right, absolutely, yeah. The AWWA is what all the public systems around the country uses for standards.
Yeah, which is a unique difference in private companies trying to run it.
So you're, you're gonna be compared to the handovers in Spotsylvania, they're using the same, same set of standards. So, from that standpoint, I'm very comfortable that those are all set.
Yeah.
So it's really the bigger picture of-
But that's, you know, I'm, when I said I'm assuming that's fair, what I'm saying is while our discussion of rates to make it paper, so, could normally include, let's increase commercial 10%.
Right.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes, you're, you're correct. And periodically, I know their system, Richmond just went through this, where they did a rate study, really in depth, looking at residential versus commercial. So every once in a while, you look at that and, and make adjustments, but.
Just out of curiosity, why would we go with a percentage rather than just a flat fee? Just because of the fact that flat fee, as far as our budget is concerned, a flat fee is easier to, I mean, if I've got a flat fee and I'm charging a customer five bucks per month on capital, I know exactly Joey's budget, but it's based on a percentage than you have, I mean, that's, that would be harder for your budget based on water usage and so forth. I mean, that would, I mean, that would be, I mean, so the flat fee would be an easier-
You mean, so for water usage?
No, like, if you said, like, for example, a capital assessment fee, and then say it's, it's a, it's a $5 flat fee per month, and then, whatever, it doesn't matter if they use 5,000 gallons or 2,000 gallons, I mean, it'd be easier for your budget, it's kinda like with the state going on through the gas tax and then-
And that's what we've got today.
Yeah, okay.
It's just a flat fee.
But why are we talking 50% though?
Talking about raising the bar.
Pumping the existing flat fee up by 5%.
Right, right, okay, okay.
But you gotta do it like that, because, because your folks said they weren't gonna use water since rates were so high, remember?
They were trying to conserve. Aqua's trying to move the flat, they were trying to move the flat.
Yeah, but I mean, that's a, that's another factor we can get, is once we raise these residential rates, we may get residents who do what the folks on, on Aqua did and say, oh, I need to conserve water.
If it's a percentage, if it's a flat fee, you get a warm out.
Well, they're, they're, they're built on that.
They wonder if washing their cars every day.
It used to be, if you went back 10, 15 years ago, the standard in water rates were, the more you used, the less you paid.
Right.
That's really changed over the last 15 years, and, and it really hit big about 10 years, and that's when, really, when we switched over, and that's what the tiered system is. The tiered system's designed, for most people that use normal water, they get a normal rate. But our rate, it goes from, to give you an idea, if you take a customer that uses, an average home uses less than 4,000 gallons, more than 50% of our homes use less than 4,000 gallons, they would pay $1.52 per thousand. That same customer that's watering their grass, or has a, a whole family of 10 people in the house, if they use more than 10,000 gallons, that $1.52 per thousand goes to $4.86 per thousand. So it really is to help conserve water usage, because it's, it's a rate that actually causes conservation, because the more you use, the more it costs.
Or you just penalize the big family.
Most people are actually irrigating.
You eat more, you pay more, you drink more, you pay more, just like this.
Everything goes up in your family.
I mean, everyone pays for, you know, so damn high rates.
Well, the good thing is, it really doesn't go up big until you get over eight.
Yeah, it, 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 it goes up and then it leaves.
It tends to be, it's, what I looked at in the booklet, it looked as though our commercial rates were fairly competitive, but yet our residential rates look lower. I mean, we don't wanna out market ourselves in commercial. That's paying for itself, that's, let's give those a break on our taxes, because Mr. Thomas said, then it expanded into residential. And I know that Caroline Pines and Townville Lending, and they are paying a rate, and they're paying a capital improvement, and they're paying an administration fee, and we have a hundred complaints, because everybody has that water, and they want to go for it. And you've gotta be able to support those systems, you know, they get paid.
Carol Anne Pines complaints.
Well, now, now they're back, since we're taking an oath.
That's, that's what I'm saying, they, they, see, see, that's a different, it's a different situation where, where the board showed compassion over business assets. And we probably should have made them pay more for the connection fee. So now they're in the system, and they're behind on what it costs to run the, to run the pipe to that. But they came in here with, you know, water that's-
But they're paying for that one, go, we, yes.
Now, those guys are-
Essentially, it was about, round numbers, $2 million to run the water line, we collected just over a million dollars in availability fees. So there's a million dollars that are still there. In looking economic development, if you look from Combe Church to the railroad track, we know there's gonna be commercial development along that, which is gonna take up some of that million, as far as availability fees connecting. But the fee that we've set aside is strictly to repair the aging lines within Caroline Pines only. So the normal fee maintains that line between there and the whole utility as, as a whole is paying the debt service on that million right now.
So that's self-contained, that's, those people of Caroline Pines are taking care of their own system, is that what we're saying?
In terms of, in terms of their water usage.
Right, and so, I mean, I'm, I'm, I understand, our utility system is very, very important,
I get that. I mean, and the thing right here is very, very important. But, I mean, the people that are on that system, I mean, if there's capital, we're talking about a capital fee or something, they're gonna have to help, I mean, when the stuff goes up, they're gonna have to maintain, you know, I mean, keep on paying more, until we, in the end, it's gonna be more customers than we're gonna need. I mean, in the end, that's gonna be our saving grace, is more customers, but, I mean, you can't say, I mean, we're gonna have to raise their rates.
We, we agree that we have to raise their rates to take care of the maintenance of their system. We agree on that. What, what, and, yeah, and they agree, and, and we need to do something with Caroline Pines, because that's what our new bridge use upon. But we don't agree that those customers should have to pay for the wastewater treatment expansion just by themselves. Everybody benefits from the wastewater treatment plant, because that's what brings us the business. That's what's gonna get-
They don't pay for wastewater treatment plant just by themselves right now.
If we raise, if they are now, because the rates are just on there.
Yeah, but we're still gonna, we're still gonna have money coming out of the general fund for the next tank, you can't raise the rates enough to get the debt service to be paid.
It's, that's-
But the maintenance on the wastewater treatment plant is just like my septic system. There's gotta be money going aside from the users to pay for that, that upgrade or that, or that repair. It's just like, what would it cost to replace one of the tanks in Dawn? If one of those tanks goes bad, what's it gonna cost to replace one?
At the plant or at the home?
At the plant.
Probably $60,000.
And-
Yeah, I, I don't know what we're talking about, but the reality is-
But the reality is that we've still got a plan to do that stuff.
But, but see, I, I agree with what you're saying, I just don't agree with the method. The method I agree with is, we have a fee that takes care of the, the users on the system. We take care of maintenance on the system, we take care of pipes on the system, that's a fee. But I got this $18 million number out there that benefits everybody, and everybody should take care of it. If, if, if we did a couple of things differently, and, and this may or may not be popular, but if I said for every new business that came, their money for the first five years went to pay for the debt service on the, on the wastewater treatment plant, we would probably be able to take care of the debt service on the, on the wastewater treatment plant a lot quicker with less impact.
That's great if you're not gonna give anybody else schools, fire rescue, more money.
And that's the point, that's the point, though.
But no, the point is, is that, we built a plant, right, when we built the plant for 3 million gallons, we want 3 million gallons of water to put through.
1.5.
We barely have a half a million gallons of water a day now, barely.
We provide 800,000.
Okay, up to 1 million. We built a building down there that most of the board was surprised was even down there when they built the wastewater treatment plant, nobody knew it was there, until they came with the GeoTech survey and said, for the building to sit there, it's gotta sit, we're gonna do all this groundwork. Because the building wasn't talked about, I'm just saying there's a lot of stuff there that a lot of people didn't agree to, it's there. But to say that everybody's gotta pay, we're already paying, we're spending, out of the general fund, 1.9, 1.9 million dollars.
And if, and if, 5 million, they're putting in 5 million?
It doesn't matter, it's not put in time.
Why doesn't it matter?
Because they're putting in 5 million, so they should be able to afford to pay.
They're, they're already paying, they're already putting in 5 million, that's what I'm saying, they're already putting in 5 million, they're putting in more.
But their users gotta pay for what they're using, and their users-
The users, the users are getting us 5 million dollars.
Well, I will tell you that this is, I mean, I think we ought to put a $5 fee, I'm with Mr. Black, $5 fee on water and something on wastewater, so that we know what the number's gonna be for maintenance.
But, and, and we're just talking maintenance of their system. Or, or do we wanna do, do a-
We need to get more capital, like a capital worth it.
I've talked to San Antonio District before, and everybody blows up when we say San Antonio, that's the right way to do it.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Let me try to go through the rest of the slides.
No, because we don't want your back raised, no.
I just wanted, I wanna, I wanna make sure I'm shedding a couple, a couple more things.
But you don't consider the two parts they go, you just consider one?
Actually, this is based really on operation, not as much on debt service, because there's no way to hit the debt service, we're just trying to make sure we stay with operations.
The money that we're talking about raising tonight is to keep the operational side on the black side and not going into the red, and to build a little bit of cash, really not eating into debt service. Because the debt service is going up much higher, the debt service, we're talking about adding the 1.2 million, really doesn't affect the total debt service. We're at 2.9, we're at 2.9 million in debt service right now, make sure it goes to 3.1 or less. When we add the new debt service, it goes to 3.2, it really only goes up to $100,000. So we're really not trying to add in, eat into that. This is really trying to make sure that we, because we have done it a long time, we've raised rates, we're trying to keep the operational side from going the wrong way. The only way, if we don't do anything, is to add more taxes from the general fund. So we're trying to keep, yeah, we're trying to keep from doing that.
And you're involved.
So, so I'm gonna, can I, can I finish? Because you're, I'm not disagreeing with your $5 idea, but I wanna show you how many dollars we're regularly talking about here, this 5% we're talking about, that's not a lot of dollars on a monthly bill. I just want you to see what that looks like, so.
That's why we actually presented 9 and 11, because look at the dollars, it's not a huge number, right?
It, it's not, it's not a big number, so, and then, then you, then we, you guys go back to debating. So, this is, discussing, this is the, this is just coverage, just showing you that right now, we're barely there. With the increases, we get up a little bit better. The cash is one of the issues, of what we talked about the other day, a month ago, is that right now, there's virtually no cash, and that's because at the end of the year, Fran was basically taking whatever was producing at the end, whatever was dropping to the bottom line, she was using it to pay debt service, and minimize how much was coming out of the general fund. And there's nothing wrong with that. That's fine. My issue is, there's no cash, so if Joey has a, truck breaks down, and he's got to fix something, or, or a pump goes bad, he's got to go buy a pump for something, he has no cash. So it's got to come from somewhere else. So I just, to try to keep the money within the system, I want to try to build up some of the cash. And typically, in a system, you like to have sixty days at a minimum, and we don't even get sixty days cash on hand here. Like to have even more than that, but sixty would be a nice start. So, right now, as far as where a user uses four thousand gallons per month, in twenty nineteen, just a shade above eighty dollars, that would grow to just a shade over a hundred dollars, based on five percent per month. And what I want to go to is, I'm going to go right to the rates and show you here. So, this is monthly usage, three thousand, four thousand, five thousand, eight thousand, and then the fees we've talked about. So right now, twenty nineteen, someone who uses five thousand gallons is paying twenty-six seventeen on water, and then down below, paying seventy dollars on sewer, for a total of ninety-six dollars, so we'll just round and say it's a hundred dollars. Then you've got, in addition to that, one oh five capital asset, two ten on the sewer capital asset, so three fifteen there, plus another dollar six cents. So you're paying about four dollars there in terms of the capital asset fee. So, the five percent increase we're talking about, only goes to a dollar ten, goes from fifty-three to fifty-six, two ten to two twenty-one, fifty-three to fifty-six. And then the monthly for the five thousand user goes twenty-six seventeen to twenty-seven, twenty-fourty-eight. So you're basically a dollar thirty or so, a dollar forty, and then for the, for the sewer side, it's three dollars and fifty cents. So there's roughly about four dollars, a little under five bucks if you're using five thousand gallons.
My bill now is nineteen. Current bill is, is current bill nineteen.
That's current bill is nineteen. That's where your rates are, right?
Twenty nineteen?
Twenty nineteen. The first column is where you are right now.
So it's twenty eighteen now.
But you're, but you're just going to nineteen.
Oh, you, oh, you're going by budget here.
Yeah, this is what, so, this is what it is right now.
So you're saying, I'm not going to raise it until our budget next year?
Right, I, I mean, if you, well, if you put it in place in January, it'd be for a half year.
We had budgeted for a more rate increase in nineteen budget, we just have been studying it and working on it.
You didn't put it there? No, I mean, you didn't put it.
What if, what if we put two percent? Two percent? Two or three percent, I think. Fun to ask that, I ask that question.
So, so wait, you would, you would say you would do this in January, and then again in July, or January of every year after that?
Depending, we could do it either way. It's really going to be up to.
Oh, no, we're not going to do it in January and July, so I want to make sure.
But I mean, we could, if you want to do it in January, you can do January each year, and it automatically take effect, or you can do it in July, it's.
Oh, so, it'll only be five supervisors if you try to do something in June, and then in January, and then in July. Because they would have to kill me to make it happen. So, I don't think that's a good idea at all.
Let me throw out one other number, that I calculated. The difference between nineteen and twenty, in terms of total dollars, is basically a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So, I don't know what we have had in the budget in there, except if it's like two, three percent, it'd be a lot less than that. We're only talking about a half year.
At twenty, we don't even hit the bowling ring rate in twenty twenty-four. We're at twenty-three and eleven.
We're not, we, we, we talk about this one specific thing. We're not talking about.
We have water, I'm going to water bill.
It's, it's not apples to apples. How much revenue does the bowling green system get generated?
They, they got that separate.
How much, how much revenue?
Well, wait, but what is that? I'm talking about water bill. Well, I'm actually paying the scale board when you're paying in twenty twenty-four.
I'm, I'm, I'm talking about how much revenue does.
What does that mean? No, no, I'm telling you, the water bill, we're talking about five percent to drive twenty-four.
And I'm saying, what, what, what economic benefit does bowling green have to water?
I don't understand the relevance.
The, what was the relevance in you bringing bowling green?
I'm just saying, we're, we're, we're saying the five percent is too much, and I'm saying that the rate's already above.
And again, we're already saying that they bring in five million dollars.
It doesn't, it, it doesn't matter.
Well, why you bring bowling green in if it doesn't matter?
No, but, it's apples to apples, water rate, three thousand gallons, one thousand gallons is more than that.
Five, five million dollars, what's the revenue of bowling green, so we can do apples to apples?
It's apples to apples.
So, so is this one here, this, this particular case, it's five percent on the bill and the capital asset fee?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So basically, what we're doing is, all these numbers, five percent is what it is. Before, we had it like, I think we had nine percent up here, eleven percent down here, and now we're just going to flat five percent across, across.
My, I guess my concern is this, is on the capital asset fee. It just doesn't seem like a lot of money being put away for infrastructure that you did this.
And it's not producing a lot of dollars.
And it's not producing a lot of dollars. And, and that money is staying in the, that money is, that money that most people are paying would be staying in the system. It's not like it's a private system where it's going out to Barcott, or going out to somewhere else in the state, or King George, that's staying here in Carolina to fix our own system. I mean, to me, that is, that is ridiculously low.
That's about, it produces fifty thousand dollars.
I mean, come on.
On the, uh.
You know.
On just the, on just the residential.
How do I, and then so if we don't, if, if that, if that rate does not go up, if that rate does not go up, how do I go back to my constituents, who are paying, who are paying a ridiculous amount for water and sewer, which these rates are like sixty-seven percent when you add it, even under highest fee, and tell them, by the way, not only do you have to pay your fee, but we're taking out of the general fund every year, you're getting double taxed? And I understand it's needed, I understand that the general fund is going, the general fund is going to be taken out on utilities that are needed, but I mean, for a capital fee, I, I think that people on the system need to pay a higher fee there.
For, for the capital system to pay for theirs, I agree, but, but, but you're again, not apples to apples, because all of your users are residential users. All of your users in that private system are residential users.
No, they're not. There's commercial mowing range.
I just want to, but I said, and, and, yeah, you don't have to, on, on, on the Aqua system, you don't have to commercialize. Some of, some of your constituents.
Oh, yes.
And, and your constituents on Aqua are all residential. That's, again, if we said, what's the, what's the value of what they bring, is another story.
We're already paying capital out of the general fund right now, so that's the apples to apples.
That's what you should.
Well, I.
That's what you should.
It's going to be two forty-two million dollars. It's all from that.
With the, with the customer in Caroline rather, I mean, you'd rather take fifty or sixty dollars from the water supply, or get your savings.
See, if they, if they were, if they were not district, I would do whatever I could to make sure they weren't. And I told them I would support you if that's what you would like.
I just think the capital asset fee needs to go up. I think the capital asset fee needs to go up, in order, I mean, that would lessen the impact on the general fund. And it would give Joey the money that is needed, because if this system is so important, you can't, you have fifty thousand dollars sitting in, in the system. So if you're, if you're a person who believes the system is, is really important, then that capital asset fee needs the money, and we, the county needs the money to fix the system when it breaks down.
And I will say, I, I get that we're making money from businesses, but that's why we invested, and put it there, as she said, it started as a commercial, this, commercial system. And then it grew and branched off, those residential hookups were needed. Well, we need to take care of those residents, which means we need to have, we need to start saving for replacement parts. We need to start paying for the increase in salaries, we need to start paying for the increase in all the regulations that come down for water. And it is better to do it now. All the citizens in this county pay to water and paying for this water and the sewer treatment system, and we all benefit from it. That's a wash. But everybody needs to pull their own weight. Can't, the, my side of the district, I'm sure, is probably not as high in income as parts of Lady's Inn. I can say that easily. Our water bill is twice what Lady's Inn is paying now. And. For the county of York, right. Our water is, is twice that. And the reason it is, is, one, we're paying a debt fee, which we're paying now, that's going through our general fund. We are putting money aside to pay for replacement parts, so we don't have to take out a huge loan, or be down on our knees and pay, beg for a huge rent in thirty, forty years. So we have money for emergency repairs, and so we could cover the cost of, of people coming out and taking care of water, and the testing, and the permits, and, and all those things that the state requires. So, there needs to be a little balance here, it really does. And I think it's time to go up and go toward the future, and be that, with an increase in rates to help cover maintenance and budgeting, and, and, and just over that, and then adding a fee to play it toward the future. That, that's reasonable. You know, you don't have to have a brand new cell phone every year. You don't necessarily have to have five cups of Starbucks coffee a week, although, so I enjoy it. But you do have to have water to survive, and if we're going to have a good, clean water system, we need to stay to the future. And you can't, nobody expects rates to stay the same. I mean, for the past five years, nothing's as cheap as it was five years ago. It's just time to, to do a rate increase in the plan for the future.
I don't have a problem with, as we discussed, a rate increase to maintain the lines and, and maintenance of the existing system for all of those who are there.
Have the plan for replacing in the future.
That's all, that's all part of maintenance and ongoing. I think that's a good idea, that sounds business. If that's what we're going to talk about, but, but. We, we seem to occasionally get distracted into how do we take care of the debt service number, and debt service number cannot be borne on the backs of, of just those who are using on everybody's benefit.
We're not excited, because everybody's paying taxes that goes into the general fund.
So, 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 so you're saying, so you're saying.
We just want to pack this.
So you're saying, right, so, so you're saying now, we're all going to, we're all going to just take that debt service number that's coming from the general fund, and, and keep it coming from the general fund, or whatever new businesses we get, we apply that to that service? What do we say?
Doesn't that have, doesn't that have been doing it? What are we paying on? Because you're barely breaking even, are you?
Joey, I have a question.
Yes, I'm.
Or maybe, uh, I'm working out. I'm, I'm doing some, some real rough math. I'm, I'm getting about forty-five thousand dollars a year generated in the capital fee for water and sewer.
When you add water, sewer, I mean, when you add commercial and residential, it's, it's about six.
So this is just residential.
So you're not.
Commercial.
Residential, I got the, you're, you're in the ballpark, for residential home.
Okay, so it's, it's, it's a market difference in commercial and residential?
It's.
It's automatically twice as much for the same status connection as residential.
And by, by the way, it's. Right, it, it's hard, it's, it's hard to do an exact.
The detail for that would take seven.
And by ten days.
Uh, yes.
It's broken up on residential.
Line J and I guess R G.
It's about sixty-one thousand. So, if you double the fee, you're adding a. So, so really, we're not adding a lot of water to it.
I would just, what, what, what struck me is, this number was fairly small, in that, you know, in twenty twenty-two, we're supposed to be at a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. How did you get it that fast? Because, all right, that makes sense.
And, and the other thing is, as I say, just taking these and growing them by five percent a year, you only add a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to the tank, to the whole system. That's all we're really talking about, adding to the system. It's not a big number.
Okay.
It just, it just, because you, and you remember users are so small.
But if you went to that capital fee, five dollars.
Sure, if you, so, so if you went to, and you're talking about five for water.
And five for sewer.
So you're kind of going, you're going to go to three dollars to ten, is what you're saying. Right, so we're, so we're, we're going to, we're going to more, we're going to raise it from one to three, but.
That's going to go, that'll add another hundred thousand dollars, hundred and twenty thousand dollars to the system right there, just by itself.
You're raising everybody's fundraise, everybody's water bill.
I just curious, if five dollars gave the boss the boss.
Basically, ten dollars a month if you.
Yeah.
From three.
If you added five to each. He's saying, he's just saying, if you had, if you had an extra five on each side, to what's there going to?
Because that's, let's see, that's.
An extra five.
Two fifty.
It's three sixty.
Or name, Mr. Rose, if you did, um, if you did two fifty on each side, like those two fifty for water, two fifty for sewer, what would be the total?
So, right now, the three is producing sixty-one. So if you had, if you had a five, it's going to be probably an eighty thousand dollars.
But if we doubled water, we should just double sewer. I mean, if you go to two fifty, you should go to like four dollars on, on sewer.
But sewer rates are already higher, but I hear another thing.
Sewer's more, I think the reason that we did it that way was sewer's more expensive.
Yeah, it's way more expensive.
Yeah, for that sale.
So, so where we are now.
In the debt services.
You're talking about a four dollar increase, dollar fifty and two fifty, four dollars and change. Right? Then I'm going to add, no, bottom.
Of, of here.
Not going to add that fee.
I'm just looking at two fifty.
As the top, one oh five, plus fifty-three. So paying a dollar fifty, and one to add on for.
Dollar fifty and.
And two fifty.
Two sixty-three.
All right, yeah, I'm kind of just, plus you have to make it even. So a little more than four dollars. If we went up to another fifty cents a piece, we're talking five dollars, so adding another twenty-five percent to whatever you could collect. So you said you were collecting.
Sixty.
Sixty and.
This, just the three fifteen, I didn't, I didn't do the fifty-three, the three fifty itself is about sixty thousand dollars.
So about sixty thousand dollars.
Yeah, but it's, that, that covers.
Per year.
Per year.
Millions and stuff, stuff.
That makes sense.
What number are we comfortable with putting aside every year? Right now, we're putting, we're putting sixty thousand dollars a year for this capital.
That's the thing, right, right now, there's very little traffic to the bottom line.
Is, is this what you're writing, Mr. Chu?
Well, the, one note that, that I think's important is, we could put more money into there, depending on how you look at it. The one point two million, one point two million we're borrowing, that's drill new wells, and eight hundred and fifty thousand of that's permitting of the Rappahannock River. So, capital costs that don't affect any of the customers you got today, that we're trying to make them pay for, but. So that one point two million, we're trying to pay for that other this increase also, so not only are we trying to cover operation cost, we're trying to cover that extra one point two million as well, with that debt service, which is about a hundred thousand dollars a year.
But see, see you, it, again, that's, that's two separate things again.
Agreed.
But you got, you got four hundred thousand for this system, right? Is that what you said? You said one point two million?
One point two million.
Four hundred thousand is for this system, and that eight hundred thousand is for.
And we're still paying, and we're still paying out of the general fund for those things.
Let me finish, but, but you're, but you're trying to put that on, on these users now.
No.
Do you ask this, go back and pay back the general fund?
That's what it's like.
We're, but we're putting money out of the general fund, every, we're, we're spending, we're not stopping the spending on the general fund. We're trying to get these systems so that they're healthy for the future. They're not paying for the Rappahannock Water River.
Well, this system, this system you said at the last meeting, and for the last several years, has been close to paying for itself, except the debt service.
Four years in a row, four years in a row, it paid for itself until we had to pay the first debt service on the wastewater plant. Soon as we started that first payment, we were no longer able to cover all the costs.
And, and, and the debt service has been going on for six years. So before we expanded the plan, this system was paying for itself, maybe or maybe not, because we don't really know, I guess.
Four two million dollar loan.
So maybe or maybe not was if we had enough money to cover any issues that came up.
Correct.
But it was at least self-sufficient in that sense. We weren't putting money away to span late, so now we're going to do that. But again, I'm not going to vote for the Rappahannock, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm going to tell you that, you already did, you said we were going to do it, but I'm not going to vote to do that, because that's something I don't think will ever happen. So, I'm going to put that, I can't put that on the users of this system.
I'm going to disagree with Joey on that, because the debt service doesn't come online until twenty-two, I think.
Which it drops.
And our debt service drops. So, I could argue, I could argue that, because the debt service that we have is going down a little bit.
Why?
Existing.
Why?
It just naturally starts to.
So we're paying off some stuff.
Yeah, just something, stuff is running off, and it's, it's dropping down a little bit.
Yeah.
And right as it dropped, there is a, there is a piece, or there's one year technically, that some of these rates would go toward it, but the second year drops, it's lower than the debt service today, even when we add the one point two million debt service, so. So, you know, we agree and disagree.
I understand what you're saying now, so the first year you pay, well, the next year, you're, you're equal.
And, and from there on, the two point two million transfer.
See, if I took that, that one.
For general pockets. So technically, except for that one year.
Yeah, I, I, I see exactly what you're saying, I think that's what you're saying.
If I took that, that service out that, that you're saying, ones gonna be even and put it back into this system.
If, or said another way, if we did, if we don't borrow the one point two million, in year three, I think it is, I think it's in twenty twenty. In twenty twenty-one, the debt service drops by a hundred thousand dollars or so, which means you don't have to transfer a bunch of general fund. There's no way to say.
Yeah. You might wanna beat that solution too.
I was just saying, in twenty twenty-one, the existing debt service we're paying today drops down, some of it's being paid off. So it drops down by like a hundred thousand dollars or so, maybe a little more. So now.
At two point two, we dropped a hundred thousand.
Well, the debt service is actually, so, so the debt service today is two point nine eight, somewhere around say three million. That's the debt, total debt service. We got a million nine coming from the general fund. So a million of it is being covered by the users. Then it drops, or goes up to three point one three million. So it's not a big, but it goes up a hundred and thirty thousand.
The users, when you say users, you mean from, from connection fees?
Yes, connection fees. The connection fees are only, um, three hundred, no.
Can't look at water and sewer.
Yeah, I'm trying to find it. Oh, a million, we had a million dollars in twenty eighteen budgeted for connection fees. Next year, it's on five sixty-eight.
Right.
And we have, how many connection fees do we have this, this year?
Or has five hundred?
No, no, uh, for the budget estimate.
Twenty twenty-one.
Twenty, twenty water, twenty two.
And, and I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, it's coming out of the general fund, we don't think that, no, right now.
Well, that's the way it's always been.
Wrong, I can get it.
You gotta kind of estimate, but, but we had twenty water and twenty sewer.
Twenty one. Twenty, twenty one, twenty one water, it's one more water, just sometimes we get something Carol on time.
Twenty one water or twenty two? Okay, so forty. All right, and we reduce our connection fee or availability fee.
Correct.
For what?
Eighteen to thirteen. Thirteen, five thousand.
So for every connection, we're losing five thousand dollars.
We can look at it that way. Or.
Or in fact, try and get more.
Yeah, that's, but that's, yeah, that's like you buy it on sale and it really costs twice as much, but you can't represent this.
We have nothing for us, so.
Yeah, but, well, and, and that's kind of the way, the way we're doing, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna cover all expenses and they're partly the debt service at thirteen, right?
Repeat that.
As opposed, we, we got twenty, forty connections. At, when, when we had the eighteen thousand, we covered all of our expenses without a doubt. At thirteen thousand, I was gonna be able to cover all of our expenses now.
That's true.
Went to debt service.
Yeah, expenses are covered by the.
So, so it does cover all expenses.
So the trains, the trains for two point two million.
With, with, that's just a budget number that you put in.
Yeah.
It's a budget number, doesn't it cover everything?
No, but what, what I'm trying to figure out is that thirteen thousand covers the actual debt service for the new connection. Yes, that's all we need to run that one, that's all we need to run.
It's just reasonable, yeah, we're at fourteen right now, water and fourteen. We're being weighted with twenty amor, amorized.
And we'd have more towns on it.
Plus two more.
You know, who don't sound like a card? You know, card you're assuming is, we're suddenly below invoice, but we're gonna make it up to bar. And that's not gonna work, that's why I'm asking, is that the right number?
That covers everything.
But even that, we'd be more if you back fix.
It's a market.
You look at that as far, as a, as far as a market go.
And, and, I'm, I'm just saying, there is so much in this, it's like a Rubik's cube. You know, we keep turning the cube and there's something else.
We need to go to the public camera somewhere.
Is this, is this, we've, we've identified like the Port Royal water system, they're, they're their own authority, or they're, they're separate.
Within the numbers, they're basically supporting.
Town Hall. Like, what are your systems?
No, the ones that knows town area system.
Townfield will actually, once we do the borrowing, um, to repay the general fund of that, um, we will actually put on a debt service fee, a capital asset fee. Um, the debt service is strictly whatever it costs to pay the debt for theirs, what they're gonna pay divided over.
Are they doing that now? Or is it gonna be something that they're gonna?
It's a flat fee right down thirty-five dollars. So we raised the rates from where they were, um, we recommended starting at thirty-five, so once we know what that number is, they'll be paying their normal water fee, which will be paying the county's normal rate, plus a fee to maintain that system, plus the debt service.
Now, will this, will this encompass the Dawn wastewater system?
Dawn is, is a separate, we've actually got a page for Dawn that was in the original one, which is a separate system.
That's another discussion.
Correct.
So whatever we do here won't affect Dawn?
Well, it depends on what you ask to be done. This rate that we're doing here, we did, in the study, we showed Dawn as well in the original one.
But we didn't rerun the numbers for Dawn.
Right.
So when we advertise, we only advertise for the county system, not?
I would say we'd wanna do both, once we figure out what we wanna do and get that done.
It all does. But it costs.
Not a good town field system though, because they're, they're. Yeah, their rate will go up, well, they're, they'll actually, they're on a flat fee, so their rate will run.
I'm really writing the five percent.
The, I think we need to start with the capital asset fee first.
Capital improvement fee, I think we definitely need to do that, put none aside. Aside it's a bad sign.
And if you did that, town field does go up, because they pay, town field would go up, because currently they pay the dollar five and the fifty-three, so if you raise those, town field will pay that also.
No, because they're, they're capitalizing out.
Their thirty-five dollar flat fee that they still get, capital asset, oh, yeah, they get a capital asset.
Corey, what was the sixty-eight number that you were looking at, we'd have to have on cash, days cash on hand? Yeah, what's that number?
Well, that's, that's gonna take a few years to get to.
Yeah, but what is it?
Seven fifty?
Seven fifty thousand. The water.
The water, that's combined.
That's only forty-seven days, so it's talking sixty.
I mean, right now, there's enough, there's zero there, so.
Our operating expenses are.
That's everything. That's debt service.
That's our, so that can.
Two days.
Pretty many of that, pretty many of that's debt service. So two point eight, correct?
Yes, that's correct. Current eight, current budget two point six.
What is it like?
Yeah, what do I feel like?
Uh, one thousand one thousand.
A month?
No, you.
Ten thousand a month.
All right, your main, main expenses are people, your chemicals.
Chemicals are about eight.
A month or a year?
A year. Water, sewer, clutter. Water and chemicals are over a hundred eighty then.
Absolutely. But that's, that's just in the plant, I mean, you've got all your wells that have electric, if you look at all of my electric together, all the pump stations, um, that's a, that's a big number.
Mr. Chee, well, can I ask you a question? And just, to get to the proper cash that we need on hand, if we did a flat fee, this is something I don't wanna come back with next year, look at it again, and then the next year after that. If we had a, if we had a sustainable, with a flat paper capital that you needed, what would you, what would you suggest a flat fee be?
To give you the, I mean, because he has, he's saying we have to get to the sixty days.
Well, why did we have to do that?
That's what utilities.
It's just kind of basic, I mean, a lot, some of the utilities around state have a full year of cash.
Is there, is there a financial requirement, a stability requirement?
It's sort of a stability requirement, it's a little bit of all of the above. I mean, let's say, let's say a hurricane came through here and, and you had no electricity and you couldn't operate. I mean, this happened down in Albany, Georgia, they got, the hurricane hit down there, Albany, depends on where you're from. Uh, they, they basically went like a week and a half without any electricity in the whole city. So they basically were trying to decide, do I send bills off? They finally said, we can't hold bills anymore, because we gotta have money to operate. Because they don't, they don't, they don't have a lot of cash in their system either.
So that was the rest of the story.
So.
When you sent me a bill, and I didn't have water, did you think they paid the bill?
I don't know.
They paid for their usage.
I mean, they didn't have water at that time, there was no electricity, and you sent them a bill.
Well, they would, with a bill, well, you're gonna pay the, I mean, I don't know their bill exactly, but if there's a capital asset fee in there and all that, but, but they would've paid for the usage up to the hurricane.
Yeah, yeah.
You see what I'm saying?
That was their usage.
Yeah, no, that's right. So, but, but, but just to have, let's, I mean, a pump goes back, what's a pump cost?
Anywhere between thirty-five hundred and thirty thousand.
So right now, he's got zero dollars in the bank as of the end of last fiscal year, that's all. So he's gotta come back, either find cash, hold a bill.
Hey, so your question, Mr. Black, is, um, that's really the way of cash on hand. We just finished the review of our water and wastewater systems, the current system is in good condition. So, the money that we need, um, to maintain the system, the problem happens to be unknowns that could happen. Our, we, we, we're in really good shape, we're typically a fairly young utility system. So really, to have the cash on hand become more of a policy issue, to have that, to be able to pay for things when they come up. Also, when we do borrowings, it's gonna look a lot better on us, we go do borrowing, and we don't have to put up a million dollars to borrow money from the wastewater treatment plant, it goes in a separate kiln. So it looks better from a financial standpoint, and that's what Courtney was looking at, since we were just, had a bond rating, how does the wastewater treatment plant compare to the county policies? And we're way off base, and this is just trying to pull us back in line with the county policies that we've got now of general.
Anytime we had to borrow through B R A, they'd take the federal service.
We have it at two fifty. They have this three dollars, you show two fifty.
Mr. Chee, one last question, the, um, capital improvement fund, or whatever you call it, which covers your expenses. And if you increase that, how would you keep separate money to go in, to, would you take percentage of it? How would you have more for improvement fund?
Wait, we, in our, in our financial system, if the board choose, and we would set that up as a separate fund, it's like the, the Carolina funds, that's under a separate line item, so when it comes out, it goes into a separate fund and sets off to the side. We can do the same thing, if the board so choose to have something just to go for, uh, future improvements and upgrades and repairs, we could set that aside, so when that money comes in, it would go into a separate account and just set that.
Maybe maybe five dollars more.
So we could do that.
Okay, that's just take off your capital assessment fee, whatever that.
We could leave that, take that off or change it.
Lacey Village, Hamilton. So those three subdivisions are basically gonna pay for cash on hand, Valentine's, three hundred and eighty.
Yeah, we're on it, they're not, yeah, they put half of it.
They don't get the, yeah, they don't. And Dawn officially adds to.
Well, Dawn's a totally separate in everything from, from its borrowing for the debt service.
Listen, how do we handle, I don't worry about the borrowing, how do we handle their bill? We're not talking about debt service, so go on, yes, there are, there's sewer bill.
Twenty eight bucks, six dollars a month.
It's a, it's a flat fee that we charge them every, every month.
So here's.
The resident got a dollar.
So, Mr. Chee, well, you said that if we increase the capital assessment fee or add a capital improvement fee to that, it would affect the systems over my district, why would it not affect the Dawn district?
Dawn is a separate, it's a whole separate code section. They don't follow any of the county's general ninety, uh, code ninety.
So how do we handle that?
Just the way we advertise it.
In that particular way, the line, the spend, the line after the federal.
Their debt service is about a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, which is paid out of the general fund, that's the way that was set up. And then the customer down there would pay to operate the system. Um, and we're at the point now where we're not making it whole anymore. There was a recommendation to raise that six percent over the next four or five years, and we'll keep that system whole.
So they're not paying the other things, maybe the personal expenses?
See, I wrote on page, page fifty-five for previous. Page fifty-five.
Dawn's twenty-eight dollars, one thirty-five cents.
Well, we add two fifty for two times.
Dawn's about six thousand dollars behind right now, so we're not, we're falling six thousand dollars behind here every year on that. A six percent increase on that system would bring about four thousand in, so it would take you two years just to break even again.
Can you, uh, can you go back to the slide where it talks about projected, uh, balances, twenty twenty-four?
The, uh, cash?
Yeah.
That was? Cash on hand. Is that the one you have?
Yeah.
That's not yours.
Right, but if we increase the.
Well, then you're kind of, you're getting closer.
We're putting half the money in there, another half will cap it, just so you know.
All right, we were just, we were just talking about if we were, if we were to, to bump it up, a buck.
Right.
A buck for, for, for water and a buck and, and a buck if you throw sewer, obviously, you would blow that number up tremendously.
Yes.
It's not like we really don't have that cash there. Charlie, what was the net, uh, increase to the, to the unencumbered balance last year? Was it one point five million or something like that, net?
But, and this is just a measure of the, of.
You can't rely on unencumbered balance.
No, no, I'm just, that was in one year, that was in one year, that was a net, net increase. Even though we played, we borrowed from the unencumbered balance to save the budget, then that increase is one point five last year. And it's one point five the year before. So, I'm, I'm not saying we're relying on it, I'm just saying, there were two instances that you could say, I've got this, I could put this seven hundred and fifty thousand or this forty thousand into a fund that says, I'll cover this. It's not like you don't have it. You had one point five million dollars, net increase, two years in a row. I'm not saying next year we're gonna be better for some of the.
Two years, we're gonna have seven hundred and fifty thousand. So you can't, you can't rely on it.
Yeah, and, but I'm just saying, you have two years, where you can say, after two good years, I'll pay a hundred dollars left on me now and put some. You also have the additional revenue sources that we're gonna see this year, and we could say, I'll put some of that money. See, so if I don't own this, all those are new targets, but they're not targets like I was mentioning. Why?
They're supposed to be able to make some two flats.
Basically, so it's like a hundred dollars a month for this. We're just talking about six hundred dollars, like, well, people would be getting, they're just, they're probably taking three hundred dollars savings, and, and six hundred dollars for, fifty dollars if you want, definitely not take that. Which is at least, at least.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm, I can't go to those people and say, I'm gonna increase the fees. And I'm raising, I'm raising your rate.
I'm also saying, I'm also saying, I'm also saying, I'm questioning this.
No, I mean, the real issue is, all the system has to do is, I mean, they're not, the whole system's on the, it's all state level, all this, but she, the, the, she, I, I, she, she.
Oh, oh, they make this, oh, that's right.
And, and the cash reserve.
We, we, we have to. Now, now, oh, then. She, that's all, she's made me responsible for all the next weeks, all the debt service.
But it gets us a.
A million dollars, a million dollars we give them. Joe, what's the question?
Every single year, you're gonna sustain paying of a hundred separate debt service, three long system.
Okay, wait, no, no, you don't understand the question, 'cause you just kind of missed it. What, what is the total debt service on, on utility system?
Two point nine.
Two point nine, sorry, three point nine.
And we transfer one point nine last year.
That's correct.
So where, where was that other million dollars?
Connection.
So, it was all connection?
It was a, budgeted an eighteen and eight, I believe, actually.
So.
That's a one point nine.
Right, not, it's not, but it's not, you said.
So, so it's the people that are on, okay, sixty dollars for more.
But you said, you said, you said people were paying all the debt service, they're not paying all the debt service.
They're paying.
Okay, so now we manage to change your, so it's not all, so now it's, it's two thirds.
What is, what is the motion?
Two fifty and four fifty and five percent.
Two fifty, four.
Two fifty for water, for.
Wait, put that slide back up.
Is that plus?
It's two fifty, capital asset fee go to two fifty, the capital asset fee for sewer go to four fifty, and a five percent rating. I make a motion that that's what the advertised rate be. Cause you gotta still raise the rate for water.
So you talking just the water rate?
And, and sewer, all sides, five percent.
Yeah, sewer, they're ready to.
Confirm four fifty?
Four fifty.
So that asset fee, where it says two ten, four ten.
That would be?
So, so this would be for twenty twenty, that'd be?
Yeah, two fifty.
Two fifty, four fifty.
Four fifty.
Need five percent on water.
Put the millies.
Really, that's a long.
Fifty-three, fifty-three.
What about sewer?
Goes back to.
Five percent.
Truly water demonstration.
Two fifty, twenty-four fifty. Five percent, five percent increase, two fifty.
Take this up or is it? Your motion was working, go on, but.
You wrote what?
Water and sewer, five percent.
Oh, oh, water, sewer fees, yes.
Yeah, no, we water and sewer rate, five percent.
I'm gonna agree with that.
Yeah, I would agree with water, well, sewer, no. Water, yes, sewer. I think sewer, I don't know if it is. Do you make motions with this idea?
I'll say.
What, what's the motion?
The, the motion is, the capital fee for water would go to two fifty.
This would be an ad, advert, advert, advert.
The capital asset fee would go to four.
Public hearing, and that'd be, we hear, we get numbers from.
The water rate would go up five percent, and the sewer rate would go up five percent, for the public here.
And Corey, the recommendation is five percent for the next five years?
Well, and, and we can make it for the next five years? I think we can only do it year to year.
You could do it multi-year.
We would reckon it in three years?
Then you would, you would have to come back and reevaluate it.
I don't think we can do three years.
Legally you can, but.
You can, 'cause we've, we've done it other places. You can, you have the right to come back and change it.
You say three years now?
Yeah, that's fine, you can do it, we can do that. You can come back and, you can revisit it. Once you've advertised it, we're good.
So, and then advertise a five percent increase in water and sewer for the next round.
Sewer rate has to lock.
Each three years, each year, whatever it is, done, pay where it's at, same thing.
We gotta have an effective pay.
July or January?
July. But, but, for the budget, for the budget?
Yeah, for July, yeah, it could be effective July one.
All right, so the motion is for a five percent increase on both the water and sewer rate for the next three years, an increase in the capital assessment fee from one oh five to two fifty, on water, and from two ten to four fifty on sewer. We have a second discussion. This is what we would advertise, if I would care.
I think we should broke the motion up into separate pieces, that's one discussion. We got a motion, or we broke.
The motion is a second in the session?
My discussion was, I think we should break the motion up into separate pieces, but it is what it is, so. All the questions?
All of them say aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
We'll call, we'll call.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Senator Wood?
Aye.
Mr. Black?
Aye.
Mr. Silly?
Aye.
Okay, and I'll put a aye. All right, we will go to public hearing with that, and then we can take it from, from there.
Who do you want to go to public hearing with?
We would be able to hit it until either December or, well, any time between now, if you're doing July, a lot of times, we're gonna do it anytime. But that's in January or February?
Yeah, well, you gotta look at what our, what the public hearings are, or plan.
What, exactly, you can one punch.
I have, I have, I just, I just don't agree, I agree with everybody, so. Yeah, we, we have a progressive. Yeah, we have the chance, after the public hearing, to not do anything, or reduce whatever.
No, it's just one.
So I just, I, I think, again, my point was the same, it was just, I think sewer was okay, and we, we, we had a pass, like. It is what it is, I, I think I fight against it in the public hearing. All right. We need to talk about, we, we really need to do these problems, we need to.
Okay, anything else?
We need to talk about Dawn.
Dawn, yes.
Separate rate system.
Yeah, good. You have any wells you're on, man?
Do they have a capital asset fee?
Yeah, I know.
They get a flat rate, a flat rate.
So can you just imply, can we give them a capital, can we advertise a capital asset fee for, for Dawn?
We could, but we're not meeting our operating fees to.
So do we need to move operations to it?
If you raised it six percent in two years, it would finally pitch out, so three, three?
Six percent.
Six each year.
Each year, need twelve percent. Ten percent is two dollars and eighty cents.
So that's a flat fee, right, now they're paying a flat fee.
They're right.
They're actually six percent, so, what would that bring to you, Mr. Chievo? If you had a flat fee.
Two dollars and seventy. Mr. Black, Mr. I, I'm sorry, can I ask, Mr. Black, sorry?
Thirty oh five, thirty, it goes from twenty, thirty-five to thirty dollars, possibly.
No, so, no, I think, but, but I think, uh, you know, my opinion there is, I agree with, that since we're not meeting the operating costs there, that we, um, we're a little kind of, so, so it's less than, it's two, two dollars and fifty seven, or six percent of, of two ten.
Dollars, seventy or so per month.
So this, this, twenty, it goes to twenty-eight, thirty-five, and this one, two dollars?
I think, yeah. Yeah, I think this, yeah, we're gonna, what is it?
Twenty.
Twenty-eight, sixty, right?
Twenty-eight, thirty-five.
Twenty-eight, thirty-five now.
Good, thirty oh five, six percent.
Six percent. Thirty dollars, thirty dollars and fifty seven, so we need to go up at the ratio.
Can we put a capital asset fee in, or is it starting on that, like, two dollars?
That was, that was a grant, a grant funded.
That's the first guy in the world for, for maintenance, that's.
Yeah, but I, I'm not sure, the grant funding that we got, with low middle income, is, is, is a lot.
Can we do capital asset fee? Courtney, can we do capital asset fee, and how the money was used to build that?
Sewer system. Yeah, 'cause we gotta have replacement costs.
I, I don't know, I mean, there's a federal, those federal money, assuming there's no issues with that.
That's the thing, it was federal grants.
That's the only part, I wasn't involved in it, and all we have to, run that by St. Anderson to make sure we're not.
Can we look?
Yeah.
We'll have.
There was some money, there was some money from the state, and I can't think of who was part of it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's, it has strings, it has.
I don't remember. That's what I'm saying, there's a lot of, like, no.
John, this is not gonna advertise this right away, if we're not gonna hear it, to anyone here, where, can we look into that and then discuss it?
We'll, we'll update our numbers with the thirty dollars and fifty cents.
So we.
That's just for one time. How many customers are on that system?
Two oh eight.
So we can go ahead and advertise and wait to vote on rate increase, but then we can always have another motion, uh, next year, we can add a capital fee for Dawn. For water assessment, yeah, is that logical? You wanna make your motion for the thirty fifty?
Yeah, I think motion, I see, uh, hopefully, Dawn, where her fee, the thirty fifty, like, July one, uh, just to get it posted here.
Second. Second. Second, Mr. Sealy, all the papers, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
I'm voting no, 'cause I don't, I don't think we can do that with those federal requirements, I'm voting no.
But we're not gonna, we'll check it out.
See, I have twenty seconds.
All right. We'll check it out, we'll have that, since, 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 we promise.
What was the motion?
To increase the way to thirty fifty.
Thirty, three zero five. Plus, plus something else?
We have to buy down, if we can.
I can, we're gonna wait on that, I thought that's one, okay.
We're gonna wait on that.
Okay.
What would you do, Jerry?
A motion to, Jerry, I'll read it, Mr. Chievo.
Just wanna let, uh, the board know that, um, our engineers are getting ready to do the bathymetric survey on Rapid Hennec River, that'll happen next week. Um, they've identified just over three hundred parcels that they need to do, uh, investigation, wetlands on, um, and they're gonna be sending out letters to the individuals, letting them know that we need access to the property, so, um, we'll have a little work on the county webpage, the letter will, well, it'll say you can see this or contact myself, um, but I just want you all to be aware, if you start getting constituents calling, that's what they're calling about. Rapid Hennec River, or any take projects?
Do we have the parcels?
We have to, we have to look at, look at it holistically, so I have to go for a permit, I have to tell them how we're gonna get to the conveyance lines from one side of the county to the other side.
Have we picked the route yet?
They, yeah, two, they have to do a primary and an alternative.
Was that my answer, or picking the route?
Yeah, that's, that's, they've looked at now, and they're, we're, Bowling Green, trying to figure out how to get around Bowling Green, what's the most, uh, cost effective way to do that, so we might pick up the railroad track and carry that into, Paul mature.
So is that, are those all the parcels, or this is, this is by sides, or that?
I don't know, this is, this is, yeah, they gotta look at all that, because you're, you're gonna be putting in large number of pipes, so we want to have our own easement, so it's not like we can do it, we need that right away. So they, just for us to get the permit, they have to do all the utilities.
All right, very good, thank you, Mr. Chievo, camera, motion to Jerry, we have a second. All of them say aye?
Aye.